First up, we're going to have Praze and 3D come up and sing the Star Spangled Banner, and then we will have the flag salute after that. And this is in honor of Flag Day, and we appreciate you guys coming today. Thank you.
Glad you could run off.
Okay.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? One so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that Star Spangled Banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, guys. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was neat.
Beautiful voices. I'd like to give those guys a hand. Thank you. Okay, first up, we'll have roll call.
Counselor Bowlin.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Furlough.
Here.
And Counselor Grizzle.
Here.
Counselor Reese Camp is absent this evening.
Thank you. And first up, we have approval of council minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the May 10 session minutes?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the May 10, 2017 session minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are approved. Consent calendar. We have tonight's agenda, June 14, 2017. Appointments on the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Board. Damon Tempe and Roger Monk, Planning Commission, John Brown, Brian Daniels, and Todd Prenevo. Alternates Samuel Brekeen and Joshua Galca. Senior Disabled Services Advisory Committee, Merlene Flyer, Sherri Leest, and Joan Voss, and Mac McNulty. Board minutes for the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Board, February 23, 2017. Library Advisory Board, March 14, 2017. And an easement for Lebanon Calvary Chapel.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar is approved. Next up, Lebanon Transit Development Plan presented by Senior Services Director, Kendra Oliver, and Jamie Dempster, and Maggie Dirk from Nelson Nygaard.
Kendra, would you pull the mic up? Pull the mic up closer.
Here we go. It's on now?
Yeah, it's better.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, Jamie couldn't make it tonight, but we'll proceed without him. I think most of you know, we've been giving updates in the city managers' reports, and as I presented budgets and presented other things to you the last few years. Our dial-a-bus has been at capacity for quite a few years, and we've known that there are more efficient modes of service. We just haven't had the funding to move forward with implementing an enhanced service. And we're very grateful to ODOT, who approached us last year inviting us to go through this process with Nelson Nygaard Consulting and other community partners to go through the transit development process, to look at how we can enhance our service and reach more riders and serve the riders that we're currently serving even better. We hope that the information packet that we provided you was helpful, and we're here tonight just to kind of hit on some of those items in there. And we did try to keep it brief, and we'll try to keep it under 10 minutes. So we'll see how we do.
Alrighty. Thanks, Kendra, and thank you to the members of the council. As Kendra said, my name is Maggie Dirk. I'm with Nelson Nygaard Consulting Associates. And we've been working with the city of Lebanon for about 10 to 11 months on the Lebanon Transit Development Plan. This project's closely aligned with the city's update of the transportation system plan. And while the transportation system plan is required by the state of Oregon and looks at a variety of modes of transportation, such as walking, biking, vehicular traffic, and public transit, the Transit Development Plan is just focused on public transportation. It is not required by the state. As Kendra mentioned, it's funded by a grant that's been provided by the Oregon Department of Transportation. And the primary purpose of this project has been to develop a new deviated fixed route transit service. I'll get into a little bit more about what that kind of transit service is. So to give you a little bit of background of what we've been up to over the past 10 to 11 months, leading up to the draft and final plan, our planning process for this project has included six different tasks. Surveys and stakeholder interviews were conducted to inform our needs assessment. We also developed some goals and objectives to help guide our project. For the existing conditions, we conducted demographic and socioeconomic analysis and took an inventory of the available transportation services within Lebanon. That includes the Lebanon Dial-A-Bus, as well as the Lynn Shuttle. We also reviewed current transit revenue and expenditures, and we made some assumptions about future funding levels, which helped constrain our service alternatives, or solutions, is what we are calling them. And finally, we developed a set of strategies to help guide the implementation of this new service. And all of this will be included in our draft and final plan, which we are currently developing. Details and key findings from the planning process can be found on pages 1 through 5 of the handout that was provided prior to this meeting. But for this presentation, we're primarily going to focus on the outcomes of developing solutions. So as I mentioned, the primary purpose of this project was to help guide the implementation of a new transit service, which was a deviated fixed route service. So this service type is a hybrid of a fixed route transit service and a demand-response service, which is currently what Lebanon has today, the Lebanon Dial-A-Bus. So a fixed route service, it offers direct routing. It has a consistent schedule. And a demand-response service, like the Lebanon Dial-A-Bus, offers reserved trip times, and it serves a large area, not just a fixed route. So this deviated fixed route service has a blend of those two service types. It operates on a fixed alignment, and it also has some designated time points along the route, but it can also deviate off of that route based on any reservations that people need to make because they can't access the fixed route for some reason. And this is typically a type of service that, as a community is growing and developing more, that will be used to kind of, it's this branch between developing into a fixed route service. I do want to note that this in no way replaces the Lebanon Dial-A-Bus. It simply complements that service. That service will still be in operation. But we do anticipate that some of the ridership will shift from the Lebanon Dial-A-Bus to this new deviated fixed route service. So what we are showing on the screen here is the preferred alternative. We had three different alternatives, and we circulated them to our project management team, as well as a Transit Plan Advisory Committee. And we ended up selecting this option. It connects Cascade Ridge Apartments in the north of Lebanon with Walmart in the south and primarily runs along Main Street. It offers, it overlaps with two stops of the Lynn Shuttle at Walmart, as well as Park in Oak, which helps provide some regional connections to that service. And depending on the deviation distance that Lebanon ends up selecting, whether that's a quarter mile, a half mile, maybe even three-quarters of a mile, will provide varying levels of coverage for the number of residents, as well as jobs that are served. And again, because we expect some of the ridership to shift from the Lebanon Dial-A-Bus to this new deviated fixed route service, we also looked at the estimated number of dial-a-bus trips that could be covered within this deviation distance. So we are primarily focused on the short term and implementing this new deviated fixed route service, but we also looked at the medium and long term. So the medium term, we expected is a timeframe of four to six years. And in the medium term, Lebanon could consider implementing a shopper shuttle service with, along with the new deviated fixed route service, as well as a demand-response service, such as the Dial-A-Bus. Typically, a shopper shuttle stops, picks up passengers at a few designated residential locations, and then will go to some major shopping destinations throughout the city. It typically only runs one or two days a week, and just a few trips a day. So it's not a frequent service throughout the week. And it can be a more cost-effective solution than a demand-response service, like the Dial-A-Bus. You know, if someone was needing to go to Walmart every week, they could just use this more affordable service than the demand-response Lebanon Dial-A-Bus. We also looked at some potential long-term solutions. This would be more in the seven-to-nine-year range. Yeah, some good public transit. So we also developed a potential long-term solution. Again, this timeframe is about seven to nine years. And Lebanon, in the long term, could consider doing a fixed route service, potentially multiple routes that would run throughout the city, potentially at higher frequencies. Again, we were primarily focused on the short term and the implementation of this new deviated fixed route service, but we wanted to give some scenarios of what transit could look like in the future for the city of Lebanon. So jumping back to the short term, so focusing on that new deviated fixed route service, we compared the operational costs of the existing Lebanon Dial-A-Bus service and the new deviated fixed route service. So this new deviated fixed route service would only require a portion of the existing operational costs for the Lebanon Dial-A-Bus. So there's still resources available for the Lebanon Dial-A-Bus to operate. As I mentioned, that service is not going anywhere. It's still going to be operating, and we want to make sure that it can operate to the best of its ability. We anticipate that the demand of the Lebanon Dial-A-Bus will decrease, reducing some of those operational costs. So that can also relieve some additional costs to be dedicated to this new deviated fixed route service. We previously showed that potential route and time points for the deviated fixed route service. And time points and bus stops will still need to be finalized by the city by doing some actual testing of the route. While time points, so some things that Lebanon needs to consider when they're selecting those time points and bus stops is that time points have scheduled departure times, but bus stops do not necessarily have a scheduled departure time. So with a deviated fixed route service, depending on how far the service deviates, there will be either greater variability in the pickup time and arrival time of the transit service at those bus stops. So some things that Lebanon needs to consider is both the number of bus stops and time points, as well as the distance between them. So a longer distance between time points provides the option for a larger deviation area, as you can see on the top portion of this graphic. But it also results in some greater variability in the arrival time of the bus at the bus stops. In the slower portion of the graphic here, shorter distances between the time points can reduce the variability in wait times, and it limits the size of the deviation area. So in the bottom portion, we're looking at more of a quarter-mile option, whereas the top half, it's more of a half-mile deviation option. We also looked at some conceptual schedules for this deviated fixed route. Again, these schedules are based on the proposed time points that we have in our potential route. And so they are subject to change based on when the city refines the time points and bus stops locations during implementation. So with this first conceptual schedule, service would operate every hour from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. That gives a total of nine trips. Currently, the Lebanon Dial-A-Bus operates from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., so it would extend service an hour later, maybe capturing some of those work commuters. And Lebanon could also consider doing some breaks throughout the day to extend service earlier and later, again, trying to target some of those people going to work, potentially even school. However, one thing to note is that a dispatcher would need to be working during all the hours of service, so this may not be an option for Lebanon to consider if there's not the funds available to staff that person or a person to be available for the dispatcher position. So lastly, I just want to highlight some of the topics that we covered for the implementation strategies. I'm not going to go into detail about all those strategies, but we developed 29 implementation strategies for the city of Lebanon. They covered a variety of topics: transit service, capital, fares, financials, staffing and training, land use, support programs, such as marketing and branding, performance monitoring, volunteer driver program, and finally, technology. And a detailed list of those strategies is on page 14 and 15 of the handout that was given prior to this meeting. So finally, I just want to thank you for the time to give you a little overview on the project, and we'd like to open it up for some comments or questions.
Looks very thorough.
And if there aren't any, that's fine, too.
Was there comments from the public on this, too? I noticed there was a committee, but was there also some just general comments? And if so, what was the, what was some of the feel for the idea? Were people excited about something like this?
We did attend the business exposition. That was our attempt at some public outreach, which was not very rewarding on the public outreach side. So we did heavily rely on stakeholder input for this. We had this advisory committee. We did stakeholder interviews. We did also do this community survey. So that was some general public input. And we also did an onboard survey for the Lebanon Dial-A-Bus. So that's for current riders. And there was excitement about a fix, some kind of fixed route service. There are a lot of people that do heavily rely on the Lebanon Dial-A-Bus, so any changes to that service, we want to make sure those people can still get around as well. But I think particularly, some kind of service that can accommodate the commuting population, as well as the student population, which I know is growing a lot in Lebanon, people are definitely excited about.
How about you, Kendra, from the people that you work with at the senior center? Have you heard comments?
I have. And like Maggie said, they're very excited about a system where they know that the bus will be at a certain place at a certain time. They can kind of rely on that instead of calling us and asking us for a ride. And, you know, especially when it comes to same-day rides or where there's not a lot of advance notice. We can't always get the times that they need. Maggie had mentioned that we did a survey process. One of the other things that we found that a lot of people were looking for, were hoping for, was expanded service. Certainly, people would like to have it on Saturday, or have it longer, and, you know, then we'd be able to help some of those individuals that go to Albany or Corvallis for school, or they go outside of Lebanon for work, and we'd be able to help them get back home when the Lynn Shuttle brings them back. But certainly, everything comes with a price tag. So, you know, this is a lot of information. It was very thorough, and I really appreciate, Maggie did a lot of work on this. And it's going to be really helpful for us as we move forward in helping us to make decisions on how to maintain our transportation service and how we want to choose to enhance it as we implement new things.
I love this. I think it's going to be great to see this develop. And I also think that as our population continues to change, we get the, more of the students, and we get more retirees that come here specifically to retire and to live here. They're probably coming from communities where they're used to having fixed route service. And so this will be a real plus for them to continue to have that versus having to transition to the Dial-A-Bus mode or the rideshare mode. So I think it's a really positive thing. I'm excited to see it go.
Thank you.
And you've done good at getting, we had some grant money. And I would like to see, once it's all implemented, maybe even applying for a grant, to really heavily market it and get it out to the people. It will be a shame if so many people that need it don't know it's there.
You're right, and that is a big key. And, you know, one of the reasons why we didn't do a lot of marketing as of yet is because we just didn't have the funding to create more service to be able to accommodate those new riders. So I agree. And that's some of the comments that we heard, too. What, the Dial-A-Bus is available to the general public? We didn't know that. So...
Did you have something here?
Well, there are several decision points here that need, you know, for us, either as a council or for the advisory committee, to recommend to the council. So I just wondered what the timeframe on evaluating those recommendation points and presentation for final adoption.
Well, and again, right now, these are just recommendations and what it looks like so far. We'll come back with the final Transit Development Plan. And, you know, we did bring to council a year and a half ago or so when we applied for the Transit Growth Management, or Grant, to go through this process then. And we did get council approval for that. But certainly, as we make any changes, I would be bringing that to council.
Do you have something?
Yeah. I have a question specific to the route. I noticed that, okay, you're going to leave Cascade Ridge Apartments, and it appears the bus turns south on Fifth and heads past the Veterans Home. How is the Veterans Home served? Is there a stop there, or what is, how does that work?
So the thought is, with the deviation process, is if they're not able to get to the stopping point at Cascade Ridge Apartments, that they would call, and then we'd be able to very easily pull our bus in there, and that would be one of our deviations. So we would have X amount of deviations, yet still make sure that our bus is on time for the next stopping point.
So there's basically four stops on this route, four regular stops. Got it? All right.
And again, those, yeah, would be time points. So that's when you know the bus is going to be there at a designated time. And then depending on the extent of the deviation, anything within some of the dotted lines you see on there would be covered in this deviation area.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So just to go back, what do you see, Kendra, as your vision now from recommendation to implementation? What is your timeframe to get us there and to get the equipment and finances and training in place?
Well, we do have some of the financing in place to implement this other piece of the system, to do the deviated fixed route. Our hope is that we'll come to a final plan, you know, working through the time points and the actual stops to help develop those final timeframes. But we do have the funding to implement the service with that route, whether it's from 8:00 to 5:00 or 8:00 to 4:00. That's what we have to figure out. And then we'll be working for a couple of months doing marketing because we think that's very important. Ideally, we'd love to roll this out when Linton Benton Community College starts back up again toward the end of September. So that's our goal. We'll see how close we can get to that, but we're hopeful that that's how it's going to work.
I know there's the Main in Oak and Park in Oak stops. Was there any thought to an actual downtown stop? You know, the Ash Sherman, somewhere in that, more of the core downtown area?
Well, our group has certainly talked about that. And, you know, again, doing this long-term planning, so in the next 20 years, what do we want to see? And so we've talked about some different ideas behind that. As far as that Park in Oak stop, you know, the Parks Master Plan, is it in the Parks Master Plan? I'm not quite sure. That park may look a little bit different. I can't speak to that. But that is a good place to stop. I've also, Walt was a part of this process. So there are some other places that we can look at downtown for stops, but certainly, there would be a cost to kind of help repurpose whatever area that...
I'm just thinking of, you know, a way to get more people to the downtown core and support those businesses, but at the same time, make it not as big of a walking impact for mobility-challenged individuals that they can not have to trek seven blocks up Main Street from Oak to get to wherever.
Right. And honestly, that's one of the reasons why we kept that, or, you know, the group thought that that would be the best route was down that downtown corridor there to support those businesses.
Just get a bell that can ring and pull over.
And the Park in Oak stop, that's also already a Lynn Shuttle stop, so that's a great established transit hub in terms of the southbound route. If we, you know, if there was an option to hit a more downtown location, I think that would be a great option. And again, so needing to actually drive this route with a bus will, I think, reveal some challenges or opportunities for where the stops will actually go.
Are we talking bus-bus, or are we talking Dial-A-Bus?
Dial-A-Bus size.
Yeah.
I mean, off the top of my head, I was thinking about the Farmer's Market parking lot, where you could whip in there, drop, and pick up, and swing back on the main and go.
That's one of the locations that we talked about there on Grant.
Wouldn't work very well, but...
Yeah.
Awesome. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have an opportunity for public comments. The council welcomes all respectful comments regarding the city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, and stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. Council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. Is there anybody that would like to speak to council? Tom?
My name is Thomas Poyet, living in 350 Williams. I'd like to ask the council for a little indulgence. What I'd like to do is have a little short demonstration of what happened to me the other day. So, if that be possible, just a short demonstration.
To do what, again? To show...
An incident happened to me the other day, and I wanted to bring it up to the council, but I wanted to show what happened. Is that possible?
Yeah, go ahead. If it gets too weird, we'll stop you, but go ahead.
You're welcome to do that. I respect that.
All right. Go ahead.
I need one volunteer.
Frank?
I want you to stand right here, please. Now Frank is a biker, bicycles, okay? I'm going this way, Frank. So I'm up here, and here's a next building. So Frank's kind of, uh...
Come on, Frank. Play along.
And he goes between me and Billy, and he's been like, non-injury.
Thank you, chief. Very good.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Very good. Excellent. Excellent demonstration. Where was this at?
It was up by, uh, it's on Main Street, up by the, let's see. I think 600 block. Almost 600 block.
So bikes on the sidewalk is the discussion?
Bikes on the sidewalk. Non-injury. The guy was about 45 years old. But he had plenty of room. I mean, you know, Frank was back quite a ways. I'm up there. He goes between me and the building, but he hits me in the back. Non-injury. But it's just something I wanted to bring up. And I thank you for allowing me to do that.
Can I ask you something real quick? Did you call us and let us know that this was happening?
I wrote it up in your citizen reports. I do a lot of those, you know. I come in a lot of those. You know, people, they've been very well accepted and I thank the city for that.
I would encourage you to call us. A lot of times, when it comes to the emails and stuff, it takes a minute to get to us. So, something in that nature, just give us a call.
By the time he hit me, he was gone. He was, you know, and, I mean, we probably couldn't have found him or, you know. Okay, so, now the other thing is, I don't know how many of you are familiar with this, but one of our merchant downtown businessmen is looking for Lebanonese Local Merchant Association. So I'm going to leave these with you, these copies. I'll just leave them with you so I don't take up a lot of your time. And I think the Faber Plaza is one of the additions to the city, including the...
Here, here. Thank you, Tom.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council?
Okay, seeing no one else, then we'll move on to the other portion of the council meeting. One second. Okay, first up, we have a public hearing, and this will be on state revenue sharing. And a hearing is now open, and we'll be ready for the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as we delve into the budget tonight, I wanted to start off with an overview. And I appreciate your indulgence as this is information that you saw as part of the Budget Committee in early May. However, it's an abbreviated version of it, but I believe it's important that as we have a hearing on the budget and we're asking the council to adopt the budget, that as a matter of transparency, we go over the highlights of the budget so that can be on our public record. So, we'll start off with what exactly it is that we're doing tonight. There are actually two budgets that you'll be asked to adopt tonight. First, of course, is the city budget for fiscal 1718. And then the other is the budget for the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency. And as you are aware, but I want to make sure the public is also aware, that as you do that, you'll be acting as the board for the Urban Renewal Agency. So, the proposed budget for the city provides all of our levels of service to be maintained. Our contingencies are, and our reserves are up 15.4 percent. The 14 percent general fund balance goal that the council set, oh, I think it was about a year and a half ago now, as part of the financial policies is met. In fact, met with a large margin on top of that. Operating appropriations are up about 4.3 percent. Roughly about half of that is represented as the PERS increase. If we hadn't had that large PERS increase, that number would be close to half. And then our capital investment is up 5.5 percent. And the interesting thing about our budget this year is that over half of it, 53 percent, is capital. That comes from the fact that we have the water treatment plant project underway. We also have other capital projects such as the extension of Airport Road, improvements to Russell Drive, the construction of the new community garden, and other smaller projects, all provided in this budget for the coming year. So, as I mentioned before, we have included a 32 percent increase in our PERS commitment to the state of Oregon because we have to. The state has upped their billable amount to us by $302,000. That was a significant challenge for us. We had hoped to add a few more staff positions to try to restore ourselves back to the pre-cutback levels from 2014. We're still quite not there. And I'm hoping that next year, because we're going to have a break from the PERS increases next year, that maybe we can make some of that progress. We are anticipating, though, over the next two bienniums, so six years, that we will see more increases, probably in the magnitude of what we've seen here for PERS. So this is going to be something that's going to revisit us every two years for the next six. Overall staffing has increased by two. Those include a new police officer position and a staff electrician. As I mentioned at the budget meeting, the electrician position is one that we were able to determine that based on our normal and expected expenditures for electrician services, that we could actually put an electrician on our staff for the same or less money than what we've been paying for those services. And then, as we get into the new fiscal year in July and into August, I will be working with our new library director, Kendra Antilla, to analyze our staffing and potential ways that we could increase our operating hours to the public. Hopefully, if our budget balances and such start off favorable, as we hope, we'll be able to make some small adjustments in a part-time position or two, which could make a very big difference in the number of hours that we're open for the library. So, the proposed budget covers all six of the city council's goals that you set in February, along with seven of the action items from our strategic plan. And there are some duplications between the six and the seven because they duplicate each other from the plan and the goals. So, those are downtown revitalization. These are first the council goals. The water treatment plant construction. The city facilities master plan, which will focus on City Hall. Supporting the development of our Lebanon Transload facility that has been proposed at the state level. Implement a wetlands mitigation strategy. And we are expecting data back from the analyst who's looking at our wetlands by late summer, early fall. And from there, I think we'll be able to begin putting that strategy together. And then, to maintain police staffing commensurate with community growth. And that is covered by at least the addition of one officer in this current budget. Strategic action plan items is to maintain the library and expand program offerings. Build the community garden. Develop a strategy to address wetlands mitigation. Update the community transportation system plan and create a transit development plan, which you've kind of looked at that, the latter part here this evening. Support development of the Lebanon Transload facility. Build a new water treatment plant. Maintain police funding commensurate with community growth. So, the proposed budget covers the time period from July 1 to June 30 of next year. It provides for all of our services and projects for the year. The budget really is more than simply a financial plan. It's also a plan of the activities that the city is authorized through its city council to perform during the fiscal year. It contains six funds that are divided in several ways into 64 segregated divisions or departments. Each one has to balance. So, there's actually 64 small budgets within the larger budget document. The budget totals $69.6 million, which, again, is a huge number for this city. And that is because about half of it is represented in capital projects. Most of those projects are, like the water treatment plant, are not projects that we normally undertake. So, as the treatment plant project is completed in a couple of years, we'll see our budget go down significantly. But anyway, the budget does reflect an increase of $3.5 million, inclusive of almost $2 million in new capital spending. The general fund is divided into 13 different divisions, which are listed here on the screen. And the budget, the general fund budget totals $10.8 million in external appropriations. We also have transfers, which are monies that we transfer in and out of the general fund to other funds within the city budget. And so we don't, as far as representing what the impact of our budget is to the outside world, we want to look at when the money is spent out, and that's that $10.8 million. That's the total external spend, if you will, of the general fund as far as it's authorized. We normally don't spend all of that, but that's where the authorization would allow us to go. And as I showed you before, there are 13 divisions. The fund provides for one new FTE, which is the police officer versus our prior fiscal year. And then also, the budget provides for the transfer items I spoke of, which are all listed here. Our information system services, all the IT, our PERS bond fund, the equipment and acquisition replacement fund, the custodial and building maintenance fund. Those all receive monies from the general fund, all totaling just a hair over $900,000. This graphic shows you, this bar chart shows you where we've been with our general fund beginning and ending balances. The plan that the council put together, if I can get the little pointer to work. The 16, 17, 19, and 19 here, that represents the goal that the council set for us in the financial policies. And we're, you can see where it's 25 percent coming into this year. If we spent absolutely every bit of money, we are authorized, we would potentially end the year at 16 percent, which would still be meeting the goal that you set. And as I mentioned before, we really don't ever spend all of our appropriation, but even if we did, we'd still be meeting the goal. So, let's look at the Urban Renewal Agency budget. Again, it covers the same time period as the city budget, from July 1 of this year to June 30 of next year. It provides for all of the authority to operate the agency and all of its activities. And it is represented by three segregated divisions, which represent the three different urban renewal districts that we have within the city of Lebanon. That budget totals $7.8 million, and it reflects an increase of $3.6 million. That reflects the fact that the Cheetah Lake District is undertaking some fairly large projects with the extension of Airport Road, improvements to Russell and the community garden project, and also a contribution to the water treatment plant. So, if we look at both of the budgets together, the 69.6 million for the city budget, 7.8 for the urban renewal, total appropriated budget comes to $77.5 million. Take out the internal transfers, the external effect to the outside world, we have the authority to spend just over $70 million. Again, more than half of that being capital projects. And that's how it looks graphically. 90 percent of the appropriations that we're asking you to adopt tonight belong to the city budget. 10 percent belong to urban renewal. So, just thanks to all the people who made this happen, this is the culmination tonight of about a six-month effort that started back in December, January, with the finance folks, the early efforts to begin the budget process to now, which, thanks to Dean, all of his department, all of the department directors and their support staffs, my administrative assistant, Lee, and everybody in the city organization. It's really a team effort. And I am very happy and proud to present the budget to you tonight. That is represented in the binders that you have. So, that's the end. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to respond to those or seek Dean's assistance in that effort.
I want to ask, you know, we talked about the PERS thing and that next year we'll have a year off. And it's every other year. I'm worried that we'll take that year off, hire a bunch of people, then that next year have to come up with that kind of money and have to let people go. Can we, I mean, can you address how we'll balance that?
Yeah, we'll have to look at the growth in our revenues and be fairly confident that anything, any positions we add next year will be sustainable into the next year. If they're not, we won't. We still have to meet the goals that you set. And we have to be prepared for what the PERS system's going to require of us. It is certainly possible, as I think your question suggests, that we could be back to you next year saying, we really need to save up for the PERS payment. But that's going to be a factor of our continued community growth and to what extent that continues. If we see a robust addition to our revenues over this next year, that might influence us to feel we might be able to add a position or two more. But we'll be very conservative in any decision of that nature. And we'll be providing the information that we base that decision on to the Budget Committee and to this body next year.
Just a comment about that. So, basically, the reason that there's an every other year position with respect to the impact or the payment, increased payment to PERS, is the state runs a two-year budget.
That's correct.
So, really, the amount that we're paying now is a two-year payment.
That's correct.
Second scenario that we would want to monitor and to, is any changes that may occur with respect to legislative action about spending liability that the PERS accountant would have. So, that becomes something that we as a city and every other entity needs to monitor with respect to its out-year liabilities. That impact could be reduced, depending upon what the legislature would do this cycle or next cycle with respect to that. So, we don't have all the information today, nor will we have it in two years with respect to what those costs are going to be. Because in two years, we'll be adopting a budget before the legislature goes home again, which puts us in somewhat of a need-to-be-a-conservative approach.
I agree with all of your comments.
Not very confident that they're going to reduce anything in the next couple of years. I don't personally feel very confident.
Any other comments?
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have Dean Baugh with the state revenue sharing.
So, I'm Dean Baugh, Finance Director, City of Lebanon. Am I close enough now? Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. Dean Baugh, City of Lebanon, Finance Director. So, we have two items here, a resolution and then an ordinance, both referring to revenue sharing. These are both requirements of the state of Oregon. And let me tell you, they're really serious because I was even in a meeting yesterday. Before we get here tonight, they have sent me these documents in the mail twice, saying reminder, second reminder. They've sent out emails saying, if you don't have these in by June 30, you will not get revenue sharing. So, they're real serious. They keep sending reminders, saying like you're late, but nobody's passed their budget set. So, that's what these are. These are requirements of the state of Oregon. The first one, the resolution basically says, we're certifying that we do these seven services or a majority of these seven services. And so that's the one requirement for revenue sharing, that we provide those services. And so that's the one requirement for revenue sharing, that we provide those services. The ordinance is basically just saying, "Please give us revenue, please give us revenue sharing." You have to draw an ordinance requesting it. Those are the two items. Currently, in this year's budget, we've budgeted for $175,000 in revenue sharing. So that would be the staff report. These are both requirements of the state.
Okay. And on our hearing, the next up is council questions of staff. Are there any questions for Dean?
And we have to have a public hearing on this.
I'm sorry?
We need to open the public hearing.
I already did.
I think you opened it before we began.
I opened it up with Gary, and his is included in the public hearing, so.
Okay.
So are there any proponent, is there any questions? I didn't see any questions. And is there anybody in the audience that have any proponents of the testimony, would like to speak for it? Is there anybody that would like to speak against it? Okay, seen none, council discussion. And seen none, we'll have the city attorney read the first resolution. That's at the end.
Oh, okay. Resolution number 2017-16, a resolution certifying the city of Lebanon provides municipal services for eligibility in receiving state shared revenue payments.
Move for the approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2017-16. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The resolution passes. And next up, we'll read the ordinance bill.
Ordinance bill number 2017-12, ordinance number 2900, an ordinance declaring the city of Lebanon's election to receive state revenues.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance bill 2017-12. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance passes. The hearing's closed. Next up is a public hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year 1718 approved budget. Dean Baugh.
Okay, so Gary's gave the main part of the staff report. What we're going to point out is the budget before you, the 69,223, 127,000, is the same budget that was approved by the Budget Committee back on May 4th. So we're bringing that. This budget does include the one change the Budget Committee put in, which was an increase, they're recommending an increase to the mayor's stipend, so we increased the budget, the adopted budget by $7,992, which is salary plus taxes, I mean, we have to pay. So this budget does include that. So that would be the staff report.
Questions?
I don't have that.
Okay, seen none. Are there anyone that would like to speak for the budget? Any opponents that would like to speak against it? Okay. Now at this point, we will close the public hearing, and we'll have the city attorney read the resolution.
Resolution number 2017-17, a resolution adopting the city of Lebanon's budget and making appro-
I'm sorry, we have to do the motion on the mayor's stipend first?
What?
That was added in there. So we need to do that first.
Do you have that?
Do you have it?
I don't have it. I'm going to throw you. Oh, my motion. Okay.
It was the additional, if you look at the additional memo that was provided this evening, there are two options, as discussed at the Budget Committee meeting.
Okay, so entertain a motion, then.
I move for option one.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the option one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes.
So option one for the folks up here was to increase the mayor's stipend by $500 to $8,000 per month.
Correct. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay.
Continuously.
Yes.
Without an end date.
And next up is the resolution. If the city attorney read the resolution, please.
Resolution number 2017-17, a resolution adopting the city of Lebanon's budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 201718.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2017-17. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. The next resolution?
Resolution number 201718, a resolution levying taxes for the city of Lebanon's budget for fiscal year 201718.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2017-18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes.
On that resolution, I'd like to remind you that the, all the X's there, we will come back with a amended resolution in July to budget for the sewer charges and storm rain charges. The state gives folks up until June 30th to pay those, before we submit them to the county, so we have to wait until June 30th. On July 1, we'll come up with a number and bring forward a new resolution in July.
Thank you. And we'll temporarily adjourn as Lebanon City Council, and we will convene as the Urban Renewal Agency Board. Number three, adoption of the fiscal year 1718 Lebanon Urban Renewal District Approved Budget. Dean Baugh.
Okay, before you, is the Northwest Urban Renewal Budget of $2,710,000. That is the same budget that was adopted by the Budget Committee on May 4th.
I'm sorry, and this is a public hearing, and I'm opening the public hearing. Thank you, Dean.
Okay. So this is the same budget as presented and approved by the Budget Committee. When we get into it, over on the resolution, I'm not sure how this happened, but the resolution that's in here is not the same that I have in the back of the budget. So we'll need to amend this resolution and add the words, "A request for up to the maximum of the taxes," because part of this budget is we're underfunding the Northwest URD budget this year. You know, we're, I think we're underfunding by approximately $900,000, which will put money back out to the fire district, the lot, you know, the pool and all the other districts, the school district, everybody. So somehow the words "up to" didn't get in here, but the one that's in the back of your budget does have the words "up to," so I don't know how that happened. So we need to add the words "up to the maximum" when we do the resolution for taxes. And that's the staff report.
Okay. Seen none. Are there any proponents that would like to speak for this? Anyone who would like to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. The city attorney read the resolution.
Resolution number 2017-19, a resolution adopting the Northwest Lebanon Urban Renewal District Budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 201718.
Move for approval.
If I could just, we're going to have to amend it.
Yeah.
We're going to have to amend it first, so.
No, no, not this one. That one's okay. It's a tax resolution.
Second one, okay.
A tax resolution.
Sorry.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2017-19. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution has passed. And the next one, we need to have an amendment on it?
Right, I'll read it first, and then if we could have, if you could identify the amendment, specific amendment language, we could pass the amendment, and then we'll move to pass the resolution. Resolution number 2017-20, resolution levying taxes for the city of Lebanon's Northwest Urban Renewal District Budget for fiscal year 201718.
So the only amendment we need is in section one, where it says, "A request for the maximum amount of revenue." We need to put the words "for up to the maximum amount."
Move as amended.
That's the only change.
Second.
We're moving the amendment at this point.
I move the amendment.
Second.
Okay, the amendment has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The amendment has passed. I'll read the resolution, please.
Again?
I think I already read it.
Oh, you already did, okay.
Would you say "as amended," but you can move the-
I move the amendment as amended. No, I move the-
Resolution.
Resolution as amended, sorry. That got messy.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amended resolution 2017-20. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution passes.
Don't do that again. Don't.
Next up, we'll be, we will have a public hearing now on the adoption of the fiscal year 1718 North Gateway Urban Renewal District Approved Budget.
So before you is the North Gateway Urban Renewal Budget of $1,376,000. This is the same budget as approved, presented and approved by the Budget Committee on May 4th. And on this resolution, adopting the taxes, it's just maximum, no change.
Any questions? Seen none. Are, is there anyone that would like to speak for? Or speak against? Okay, seen none. We'll close the public hearing. I have the city attorney read the resolution.
Resolution number 2017-21, a resolution adopting the North Gateway Urban Renewal District Budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 201718.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2017-21. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Resolution passes. Next resolution?
Resolution number 2017-22, a resolution levying taxes for the city of Lebanon's North Gateway Urban Renewal District Budget for fiscal year 201718.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2017-22. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Open up city, open up public hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year 1718 Cheetah Lake Urban Renewal District Approved Budget.
So before you is the Cheetah Lake URD District's budget of $3,792,500. This is the same budget that was approved by the Budget Committee on May 4th. There's been no changes. And the resolution for taxes is, we're asking for the maximum distribution of taxes on this area. That'd be the staff report.
Any questions of staff? Okay, seen none. Any proponents that would like to speak for? Opponents that would like to speak against? Seen none. We'll close this public hearing. Have the city attorney read the resolution.
Resolution number 2017-23, a resolution adopting the Cheetah Lake Urban Renewal District Budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 201718.
Move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2017-23. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Next resolution?
Resolution number 2017-24, a resolution levying taxes for the city of Lebanon's Cheetah Lake Urban Renewal District Budget for fiscal year 201718.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2017-24. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes. And we will adjourn as the Urban Renewal Agency Board, and we convene as the Lebanon City Council. And at this point, we'll open up public hearing for the revised city fee schedule. Staff report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, if you look at page five of the fee schedule in your binder, we have just a few very minor changes for fees related to the library. Two of them are simply changing, making some changes in titles. And then the third one is the elimination of a minor $3 fee for a processing fee for when an item is lost. That's on the library. You flip the page over. The only other changes reflect the fact that we've added some facilities to our park system, the Academy Square Gazette, the improvements on the shelter at Christopher Columbus Park and Strawberry Plaza. So we've either increased, in the case of Christopher Columbus, and created new for rental of these facilities. So if a private party, for example, wanted to rent Strawberry Plaza for a day, you can do that for $75. So these fees have been calibrated with the idea that we want to cover our costs with the city. And in that, in that spirit, we've added some changes to our camping fees, which you'll see listed right below these new facilities. That is the extent of the changes. All the other fees charged by the city remain the same as last year. If you have any questions about those changes, either I or a member of the staff will be happy to respond.
Okay, seen none. I'll ask for anybody that would like to speak for this. Anyone like to speak against? Seen none. I'll close the public hearing. Have the city attorney read the resolution.
Resolution number 2017-25, a resolution amending fees and charges for city services and repealing Exhibit A fee schedule of Resolution number 2016-38.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2017-25. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution passes. Thank you, Gary. Okay, we will temporarily adjourn as the city council and reconvene as the Urban Renewal Agency Board. And next up is Northwest Urban Renewal District Minor Amendment. And this is not a public hearing, if I'm correct. Is that correct?
You're correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. We're bringing a resolution before the agency to amend the project list within the Northwest URD. As you're aware, every URD has a project list, which lists those projects which can be funded through the URD mechanism. An example in the Northwest URD were improvements to Reeves Parkway, as well as Hansard, extension of sewer and water lines. A lot of what we've seen out there in development is a result of that. However, at times, we have other projects that come up that were not on the list, that would benefit the city and certainly the district, but we really have no mechanism to work with the developer to assist in that development, because the project is simply not on the list, and we cannot go forward. What we're proposing tonight is a change to the project list that will include a sort of elastic clause, if you will. It will allow the city to enter into agreements with individual property developers for a specific site and project. If you note that all the improvements are generally limited to streets, sidewalk, curbing, sewer, water, stormlines. In other words, the basic public facility infrastructure. This doesn't include any sort of major capital items. This change also does not grant any additional authority to staff to enter into these agreements. All the agreements as before will have to come before the agency for final approval. But again, this does provide the city some flexibility if we have that unique circumstance that comes up. So instead of amending the job list every time, we can just simply enter into that agreement and bring it forward to the council. So with that, it's the recommendation of staff that you do approve this change. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Was this an item of discussion at the planning committee?
No, this was something that, we were looking at the issue of one particular project, and we had to contact a urban renewal specialist attorney. And it was his recommendation that, well, first of all, his comment was, "You have to amend the project list," but he also recommended going ahead and looking at a sort of elastic type of general option for the city to enter into. In fact, I think this is something that I'll probably think about adding to the other URDs as well. It just provides some flexibility for staff with those unique projects that just come
I would add to that, that while this provides future flexibility, the immediate flexibility it provides is to help support and facilitate moving forward the Mill Race project that I think we're familiar with over at Reeves Parkway and Highway 20.
Any other questions? Seen none. We'll have the city attorney read the resolution.
Resolution number 2017-26, a resolution to amend Section 3(c) renewal projects of the Northwest Urban Renewal Area Plan.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2017-26. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. And number eight, economic development agreement. Spire's property. Trey Kennedy, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I tried to lay out the details of a fairly complex agreement, although having gone back and looked at some of the previous economic development agreements with Lowe's and with Samaritan, it's not as com- and with Samaritan, um, it's, it's not as complicated as, as maybe they could have been, um, after reading those and, uh, putting me to sleep on a, a few nights. Um, we are essentially trying to, well, we are financing the public improvement portions of the development through exclusively, uh, the use of tax increment financing. In other words, uh, we don't pay back anything that is not first received, um, as an increase in the taxes in the urban renewal district from the actual development itself. Uh, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's a fairly unique, although not, certainly not the first time we've used this type of financing strategy. A couple of key points that are different than maybe some of the, uh, those of you that have been on the council for a while, uh, may remember from previous, uh, economic development agreements, they will fully pay all of the permits, S D fee, S D C fees, uh, engineering review fees and all of that stuff upfront, although it is reimbursable as part of the, um, uh, public improvement, as far as the public improvement portions of it, uh, related to, uh, paying, getting reimbursed out of the tax increment financing. Uh, you'll see that there was kind of a, a last amendment to the numbers. Uh, the numbers that we had previously been worked, uh, work, uh, working off of were, I think, about a year and a half old, uh, provided by Udell Engineering, Brian Vendetta. Um, he was asked to provide updated numbers based on construction activity, new, new bids, and, you know, they keep track of what things are bidding for, um, you know, what, what's the cost of, of, of gravel, of paving, all that kind of stuff. Um, so they put together amended, uh, revision, revised numbers related to the public infrastructure itself. Um, and those are reflected in, that's all that is reflected in the amendments that were provided today that changed from the original agreement that you were provided. Um, it, it has a total estimate currently of eight, uh, eight-point-seven million and change. Um, and again, it, there is a cap of a hundred and ten percent of that amount. In other words, if it, if the public improvements, uh, go over, um, the developer certainly can, um, apply to get reimbursed up to a hundred and ten percent of that total, uh, over the terms of the U R D, which expires in two thousand and twenty-eight. Um, and again, there'd be no payments after two thousand and twenty-eight, and there will only be payments made from tax increments actually received from the development between now and then. The terms of the agreement, uh, I put into, uh, the agreement that is in front of you, much of the negotiation discussions themselves, and I, I believe, Ms., uh, city manager Marks may want to just, uh, have this, uh, comment on his, uh, meetings and, and discussions with, directly with Mr. Spires. Um, it's obviously an exciting project, uh, and the council's been presented with it before. Um, and this would put in a financing mechanism, uh, for those public improvements.
I'll just comment that this is, uh, more or less a simplified version of the agreement that we have with Samaritan, uh, with a portion of the increment, not all of it, but a portion each year being committed to the reimbursement, not upfront, but the reimbursement of installation of, of public infrastructure. Uh, it's structured so that during the first five years, uh, eighty percent of the increment would be committed to reimbursement, and thereafter, until the year two thousand and twenty-eight, it drops down to seventy-five percent. In the case that the entire, um, project list was, uh, accomplished according to the numbers that we've been given by the engineer, the benefit to the city is that the addition of this development after the sunset of the district, and there's no longer an obligation, uh, to make the payments on infrastructure, is about, uh, close to one-point-five million dollars in new revenue that would come from the new development. That is, and the caveat there is if all of the infrastructure as foreseen by the project engineer is actually installed, and that's the seven-point, uh, I think it's seven-point-eight million.
Up in the revise revisions today.
Right. So, that's ultimate benefit. Uh, in the short term, up till two thousand and twenty-eight, we receive either twenty or twenty-five percent of that new revenue thereafter, uh, about one and a half million that we would then share with, uh, Fire District, the county, and other overlapping districts. So, that's the, the benefit, uh, in the long run. So, I think, I think it's a fairly simple agreement as, as development agreements go, and I believe it is key to their financing scheme to make this project happen. If you have any other questions, I'll be happy to respond to those.
So, I've heard about this development for what seems like decades. I haven't seen very much as far as plans. What is the plan?
It's a, uh, it's a mixed-use development with, uh, I believe their first phase is going to be some storage on the, it would be the
Southwest.
Southwest corner of the property, uh, then expanding out to, uh, multifamily and single-family residential, and then some commercial developments. Uh, I believe they're hopeful, uh, for a grocery store, a couple of restaurants, um, and some light industrial uses, maybe even in biotech, uh, but it is a mixed-use development. Um, if you would like to see the site plan, I'd be happy to sit down with any of the members of the
I just want to know if that was a fir- I've seen the site plan.
Oh, have you?
I just want to make sure that's a firm.
They did make a presentation six months ago?
Yeah.
Few months back, you may not have been here, but there, there was a presentation.
Yeah, and it's the plan, the plan that was adopted by the, the commission, which I believe you've all seen, remains. And that is the project that we're talking about.
My only concern is that I, I can see the need for the, the multifamily housing and the, the, the single-family residences. I worry about the build-out and then a lack of secured commercial occupancy, so we have these neighborhoods interspersed with big blank lots or big empty
Yeah.
expanses waiting for something to go in that may never come. And that, that concerns me because that devalues, to me, the neighborhood that was built around this small community-based, you know, the lake and the train tracks, that's all great, but if you have a bunch of empty lots where the commercial occupancies are supposed to be, it's also a big hit to the tax rolls. So, how do you feel about that?
It's hard for me to comment on, on, um, the developer's plans other than to say that, it's my understanding that he has agreements with some private, um, commercial interests, uh, for the property. And then as far as the financial impact to the city, if those commercial properties don't come, those improvements, that will reflect itself in the value of the increment and therefore would drastically reduce any amount that we'd be paying to reimburse infrastructure. So, this, the, the, the agency, it really wouldn't be compromised by the failure to produce on the developer's part the commercial elements. Um, and then, of course, the commercial elements are a factor of the risk of development.
Right.
And, you know, what you point up is, is, I suppose, a possibility. Um, I'm certainly not a, a good gauge of the, the prospect for success here, but, uh, I believe he has, he has a plan in place and, and we're, if, if you approve this, then we're going to see if he can make it happen.
I, I think one of the things that, uh, potentially could occur, um, as that project, the whole phase project goes into effect, uh, there may be some modifications. The developer, at this particular point in time, may have a design for X on a given lot or set of, set of lots. Some of that may change based upon, um, development that will occur or not occur in that particular area, and some changes in the demographics of that area. So, although we have a plan today from the developer, it doesn't necessarily mean that every one of these things into itself will occur in its form. There may be some modifications to those.
There certainly could be modifications, and in fact, that was part of our discussion in, in our negotiations. You know, time will tell. And keep in mind, too, that any changes to the project that occur on private property really, unless, unless those changes, uh, change the need for public infrastructure, the water, the sewer, so forth, that would serve those properties, it really wouldn't impact our agreement here. Our agreement is limited to the public infrastructure.
Correct.
And so, any changes to the plan that are solely on the private property, that would be their, their purview and, and their, their business to try to execute.
And ultimately, the, the livability and the development of, of this structure is going to depend upon the developer's ability to market the plan and to bring in, uh, the investments necessary to make that functional. And success breeds success. So, as those things begin to come on, then I think development, um, potentially, um, can become, um, a cascading series
Mm-hmm.
which the developer will drive. And ultimately, it's the developer who's also going to win, uh, in that process because it's a financial incentive for him, not just for the city and the tax revenue that comes to us.
Is the infrastructure, is that phased in or is that a build-out, complete build-out and then a fill-in with?
It'll be phased in as he opens up different elements of the project.
And I can't remember how many phases I saw in there, but...
Walt, how many phases are there in the project? Three, four?
I believe there are three or four.
Yeah. Could you come up? Thank you. Um, one of the note, he will be applying for what's called an admin review of his, uh, first phase. He already has a, um, preliminary plan approval, and as he goes through each phase, we have to review it on a staff level to ensure that it complies with the approved plan. Now, let me also switch gears to the Samaritan campus. That was approved in two thousand and eight. It is nearly ten years of age, and they've already gone through eight modifications of the original plan. That site has not built out completely. In fact, the first five years or so, it looked rather vacant, but in the last three or four years, we've seen significant development. And I think something similar will happen here. You get something going, yes, there's an open field and squirrels will be running through there, but after a while, things will start occurring. It'll attract those businesses. This is not a quick two- or three-year project. It'll probably be a decade or so.
And is twenty-twenty-eight, when it sunsets, is that when that U R D is sunsetting, or is that was a date negotiated by you guys?
That is when the U R D sunsets, i.e., goes away.
Yeah. No more extensions, right?
Maybe.
Okay. Thank you, Walt. Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion as the Urban Renewal Agency to approve the economic development agreement for the Spire's property.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The motion passes.
I just, sorry, go ahead.
We'll adjourn as the Urban Renewal Agency and reconvene as the Lebanon City Council.
And just to point out that it is a three-party agreement. It's the city, the Urban Renewal Agency, and the developer, so it also has to be passed as, uh, by, as the city council.
So, as the city council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to agree the econo- to approve the economic development agreement for the Spire's property. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? It passes as a city council. Next up, we have a public hearing for the public contract exemption. And that'll be Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. Uh, after you just passed the economic development agreement, uh, the next step in this process is, um, an exemption from public bidding. So, as we are going to spend tax dollars on public infrastructure, um, we have to exempt from public bidding, uh, because we're not the ones that are doing it. Uh, O R S two-seven-nine-C-three-three-five provides a mechanism for that, very similar to what we did with the water treatment plant, only different, uh, I guess, in the sense that we won't be, uh, involved in the contracting piece of it, rather just reimbursement. Uh, we put the, uh, findings out, which are attached, uh, they've been advertised. We had no response from anybody, uh, written or oral. Uh, in our opinion, uh, what we've provided here won't change, um, any of the bidding competition as the Spire's project will have to, uh, actually, um, bid the project as we would. So, with that, I can answer any questions. Um, but again, we believe that we've met all the findings and the criteria.
Any questions, Ron? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the audience if there's any proponents that would like to speak for this? Any opponents that would like to speak against? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the public contract exemption. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ron.
Yep.
And now, we're in regular session, supplemental budget amendment, Dean Baugh.
Okay, O R S, um, I'm Dean, City Finance Director. Um, O R S two-ninety-four-seven-four-one authorizes the supplemental budgets to be throughout the year when unknown things happen throughout the year. So, things that we didn't, we couldn't plan for at the beginning. So, we have three items here. Um, number one is the, um, settlement with the Astme Union over the Supreme Court issue. That's a six-thousand-dollar amendment that, that we have to pay, uh, based on the supplemental agreement. Number two is seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars in, uh, capital projects. Jason had a couple of dump trucks that just crashed, and he, I think he had to replace transmissions or, was it transmissions then?
Yeah, emissions problem.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, 'cause that's different from crashing.
Yeah, they didn't crash.
I'm saying, when that, when I say crash, I mean, they just broke down total.
Okay.
Broke down, yeah. That's different.
Sorry. Yeah, that, they, they would not move. So, he had to get both of these things fixed pretty quickly to get them back in the road to keep working. So, that's what that one was. And the third one is the four-million-dollar loan we received for the Cheetah Lake U R D, and that was to do the, the water plant, Airport Road, Porter Park, that whole project.
Russell.
And Russell Drive. Yes, those, all those, that area. So, that was the four million. We, we finished that loan in late May, so we're bringing it today to get it in the budget because Ron's eager to spend it. So, so that's the three items we have here. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to ask, answer them.
Questions? Seeing none, city attorney read the resolution.
Resolution number two thousand seventeen-27, a resolution authorizing a supplemental budget amendment to the City of Lebanon two thousand and sixteen-seventeen budget.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution two thousand seventeen-27. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Resolution passes. Number eleven, contract change order, Airport Road Extension, Russell Drive Improvement Project, Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. Um, what you have before you here tonight is a proposed change order to the Airport Road project, Airport Road, Russell Drive project. Uh, per city municipal code, anytime we go over, I believe it's seventy-five thousand dollars on a change order, uh, even though it's budgeted, we need to bring it back to, uh, the city council for approval. Um, just to kind of give you a quick glimpse of what we're asking for here, um, we went to North Saniam Paving while we have them, uh, under contract with Airport Road project to, uh, and asked them for some prices to basically build out the exterior of the park, uh, i.e. the parking, curb gutter, sidewalk around the portion of the park, uh, along Willow and Taylor, and also to give us a price to, uh, add the main utilities to the park. Uh, you can see those there. There's a couple of other items in here that we just added into it. We eliminated some paving on our utilities project last year for Gilbert Street out by the water treatment plant, uh, with them being a maybe, major paving company. Uh, we asked them to, uh, put another lift of asphalt on that since we reduced it last year. And then there's several other things where, uh, some existing houses out, uh, I guess, call it the field east of Safeway there. the field east of Safeway there. We thought we were going to be able to provide them temporary service to their houses during construction, a little easier than what we were able to. That's because their lines were out in our right of way, their drain field was in our right of way, and so we ended up having to do pretty substantial work in order to provide them service as we're building the road out there. So with that, basically what this change order, the bulk of it, is for the Porter Park The only portion that's coming out of the funds for Porter Park project, it's all coming out of the URD, would basically be the $27,000 here for items 4035 through 4047, which are the utilities to the park. The rest of it is coming out of, it's the same fund, but different pot of money in our, the way we've got it broken out. So with that, I can answer any questions you have about it.
No questions? Okay, entertain a motion.
Move for approval of the change order. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract change order. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Next up, proposed ODOT city walkway, bikeway project agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a project that we've actually been working on. Frank's been involved in this and our staff to get a pedestrian activated crossing at the intersection of Fifth and Tangent Street. ODOT has graciously agreed to fund that project. What you have before you here tonight is the agreement. They like to do everything in an IGA. In short, really all we're looking at here is basically ODOT's going to pay for it and we're going to maintain it when it's done, including the striping and the signing. They'll pay up to $80,000. We're actually having a consultant do the design since we don't have really any staff available to do the design right now. So with that, I can answer any questions about it.
Very badly needed, I would say.
Yeah. This is a great one, and I know we talked about it when we were talking about the transportation plan a while back, and I've had citizens ask me about it, and so thank you very much for working on that. Appreciate that.
You bet.
Hey, Ron. One of the other things that, about that Fifth Street area, it's come up to me a number of times, is the curbing, you know, sixth, seventh pedestrians going up and down Fifth. Does any of that get caught up in this or no?
Say that to me again, the curbing?
Like ADA curbing.
Oh, ADA ramps?
Yes.
Uh, no. We've actually, we've actually approached ODOT on that with the multiple sidewalk access ramp issues that they have along that stretch. And with anything with estate, it takes some time, but we've actually filed the actual, went to their complaint site and filed the complaints on that because that is state highway and we don't have any jurisdiction. This won't cover that, but they're aware of it. I don't know if you know, ODOT was in a pretty substantial lawsuit for ADA, and I can't remember the year that they planned to have all of their state highway access ramps updated, but it was fairly soon. So if you look at what the legislature's doing, they're allocating a lot of money to sidewalk access, you know, and we'll keep on top of them as we do, but...
Good question, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seen done, entertain a motion.
I would move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed bikeway, walkway project agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Number 13, award E Street Sewer Project contract.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we have before you here tonight is the award, or proposed award, for the E Street sanitary sewer replacement project. This is basically between the canal and Seventh Street. That section of sewer is, got lots of failure points in it. We've got broken laterals and it's in dire need of repair. As you can see, we've got four bids on the project. Pacific Excavation, who we worked with lots, was the lowest bid. They were approximately $10,000 over ours, which surprised me. I would have thought that it would have been a lot more this time of year. Unfortunately, we have to bid at this time of year because E Street's a primary right there in front of the high school, and we've got such a short window to do it. So actually, it came back better than what I thought. I was guessing somewhere around 400, so it's $30,000 less than what we thought. So we're recommending that council award this to Pacific Excavation.
Any questions?
Why would the, why would you think it would be around 400, but the engineer estimate would be 359?
So when we developed the estimate, actually, UDL Engineering developed the estimate for it. So they put together estimate based on averages, so we based it on averages. I'm just saying, my guess, when I look at the bidding climate right now, based on what we're seeing here and based on what we're seeing from other contracts and whatnot, I was thinking we're probably going to be...
Because you're an engineer.
About 400, yeah.
And your estimate was 400. I just want to be clear.
We were between 300 and 400,000, yes.
In the ballpark.
Call it ballpark.
Okay.
There you go.
I like it.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the E Street Sewer Project contract award. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Number 14, contract change order for the water treatment plant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is something we discussed back in May when the council approved the GMP3, Guaranteed Maximum Price 3, for the water treatment plant project. We brought up the fact that we did not include the two water, the raw water line bore and the, also the underdrain for Chita Lake in the GMP3 because we were still looking at some of the proposals. However, we did put that into the overall projected budget, you know, of the 27 million roughly. We've worked with Slaton through a couple of different ideas that we had there. There's probably about an $80,000 cost savings if we were to go over the canal, and we looked at that and tossed it back and forth. One of the biggest things that we see as a safety issue is it's right there on the corner of where the corner of River Road comes around there and goes over the canal. If there were to be an accident there, and we've seen several accidents, and to take that line out, it'd be pretty catastrophic. So you look at that, you look at the maintenance that would be associated with the pipe being above ground versus underground, and I think looking at it from that perspective, our recommendation would be that we actually bore the line under along with the underdrain. Obviously, the underdrain can't go over, but... So with that, they've came back with a $682,000 change order. They've covered everything from A to Z in this thing that could possibly go wrong. They're talking about wellheads for de-watering because we'll be about 20 feet deep in both bore pits due to the, what FERC put onto us as far as how we could get underneath the canal. So it really increased it. Plus, we've got to pipe the canal twice with sandbags. They have to bring a crane in. There's a lot of tree removal, vegetation removal, and with that big of equipment and that deep, we'll obviously be tearing up a portion of the parking lot and having to re-put it back together. So it's fairly substantial. It's about $400,000 more than what we had bid and received when we did the utilities project. This is strictly based on a government agency dictating the way we do the project, and we could have done it the other way and saved that, but unfortunately, this is where we're at. So with that, due to the essence of time, we would recommend that we move forward with this change order to it. You can see what it does to the overall price of the project, which, again, we did discuss. Told you it'd be somewhere around $27 million. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Just, could you discuss the financing and impact on contingency?
There is no impact on contingency. My overall financing of the project, since we knew that this was going to be about $600,000 when we, when we came with the GMP3, the overall financing was 27 million. So of the project cost was 27 million. Doesn't change Slaton's contingency, nor does it change our contingency. So it was budgeted for, just needed to get some final prices and see if we could knock it down. It was just a value engineering item that we just didn't have time to get to and work through it, and this is where it shook out.
Any other questions? Seen done, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract change order for the water treatment plant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. City Managers' Report.
Oh, I'm done.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, May was a very busy month for my office and for the entire staff. I'll just cover some of the focus areas for myself. Details are in the extended report, but basically, my month was defined by Strawberry Plaza, working with, with the maintenance crew and with Jason to make sure that we were able to open that on time. Of course, the fiscal 1718 budget, the Mill Race Agreement, which you approved tonight, and then our process to find a new library director. Those were the four things that really took up most of my time, although there was a whole heck of a lot of other things that went on, too. If you have any questions about the month of May or anything else related to the city, I'd be happy to respond.
No questions? Okay. Next up, any items from council?
I just wanted to say that I wanted to give kudos to Jason and his crew because I know the amount of work that went into that last-minute rush to get the plaza ready, and I thought it looked great. I popped in there a few times and watched them furiously working and wrapping things up, and it just was awesome to see. So even though I was thrown out of the patio before it opened, but I thought, great job by the city and the city staff. It just shows what quality, committed people we have, and I'm proud of that, so...
Absolutely. I totally agree with you. Jason and the crew really gave 150%, and they made it happen. And we're lucky to have them as our maintenance crew.
Yes. Two items. One, I, I think we need as a council to really extend our appreciation to Gary, Dean, the department heads, all the staff that were involved in the budget preparation. These things are terribly difficult, requiring an inordinate amount of time to looking at details to ensure that every item is covered to meet the state law requirement as well as the Budget Act. Having been responsible for government budgeting in excess of $250 million a year, I appreciate the effort that goes into this kind of a process, and I believe Gary needs to be commended and all the staff need to be given kudos for the quality and the success that the agency has in meeting the audit requirements that are all tied to the budget process. Second, I think special commendation to Gary for the totem pole. And its addition to Strawberry Plaza, truly a heritage item that has been added to the community.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Robert.
Anything else? One, just a little thing on the City Managers' Report. When we had our meeting, after Gary and I both went to the earthquake preparedness seminar that was fantastic here, I highly recommend it. If there's another one, if you haven't gone, that you go. It's excellent. It just explains things you never knew were important, and we will be working further with Chief, with Gary, and working also on what we do as a council in the case of an emergency, because that was something I didn't know what we were supposed to do, and there's actually some plans in place, and we'll be going over that more in the, in the future months, so you'll be hearing more. And Gary and I have also discussed having some new counselor, new mayor training when new mayors and counselors come in, that that would be part of that training and that we would have an actual program that Gary would take them around in different departments. So I think that's an important thing that we don't have and something that we'll, we'll get going. So thank you, Chief, and we'll work on that. That's all I have. Go ahead.
I talked to Dean before the meeting, and there are some changes that were made to the deposit policy recently with the water. I've been feeling lots of water questions online, having, having a good time doing that. But I think it would really be beneficial if Lee and Dean could get together, highlight that in some sort of a post for Facebook that could be put out there, and then we could share that via our site so that people understand the changes that are made and what the actual, specifically the deposit policy and the ability to transfer your deposit to a different residence and how that works or does not work.
Excellent idea.
Renter versus owner, I think it'd be really helpful to break that down.
I agree. We'll do that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment a little bit on this library assistant, or not assistant, but administrator hiring. I think the, the group did a great job in hiring Kendra. We had some good applications that came in, looked good on paper, but when you got to interviewing them and talking with them, why, man, they didn't add up. So I'm real proud that we went the way we did.
I've had some people who were involved with the library who were over-the-top ecstatic about that choice. So I've had nothing but great feedback on it.
Yeah.
Same. I've had nothing but good feedback on her, and I think that hiring within shows also our city's commitment to, you know, growing people through the ranks, too, which I think is really important, and it was, it was a good process. Gary did a great job on making sure the process was, was done properly, so...
Yep.
Yeah, very good. Thanks, Bob. Anything else? Seen done, we have another opportunity for public comments, and I see nobody from the public, so we will move on to items from the press. Is there anything from either of the press people? No? Okay. And next scheduled council meetings, July 12th. We just have one meeting in July, 6:00 p.m., and August 9th, 6:00 p.m., and we are adjourned.